Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City Urban Board of Commissioners June fourteenth at the Pride Day Mall. We're going to open up with the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most gracious heaven, all of you here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just, best served respectively. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep the shenanigans at stake. City and its people. In your name.
Thank you.
Yeah, the agenda is presented on the over any corrections or amendments. Would someone please make a motion for the agenda? So, motion I'm looking for, second. Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Seven, zero. Moving into presentation and allegations. Ms. Warren is honored, listening in on herself this evening. How would you? The, um, going to do presentations to presentations per item. Just recognize Greg Poole, Risk Manager, S E M A, twenty twenty-two strongest link in the chain for the city and the resource director, Stephanie Woods, will address. And welcome.
I have the pleasure to present the strongest link in the chain awards to Greg Poole. And I'm very excited about this because Greg is just so committed to the city, to the employees, our citizens, to do the right thing all the time and to deliver a cultural service and excellence that isn't always found. So I'm very lucky that when I came to H R, he was the risk manager. Uh, he's been just extremely helpful to me and everyone else. Greg was awarded last month through PREMA, which is the Public Risk Managers Association. He was awarded the State Award for Risk Manager of the Year, which is a very high honor. And if you look in your G M A book, if you got it yet, there's a great article in there about him too. So we are just so excited for Greg, everything that he does from the safety expo that he arranges each year for all the employees, uh, to the safety teams and trains that we have. And right now he's, he's through a very major accomplishment project of safety maintenance in all of our departments, just ensuring the safety of equipment and such. So that's a very big thing, one of our strategic goals for this year. So it's my pleasure to present Greg and congratulations very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, sir.
Thanks and gratitude. Uh, my mom will be excited. She watches social media and I've been your risk manager for eleven years. And she says to me from time to time, Greg, are you ever going to win the strongest link in the chain? And I say, Mom, let's keep hope alive. You know, maybe one day. So, uh, I, I'm not told her, so she'll be excited when it's posted. But I want to say thank you to everyone here. I could not do what I do here in City Griffin without your support. And that comes from the very top, all throughout the organization. Uh, the board, you have proved many things that we use for safety. And I know you have a concern about safety for our employees. And so I thank you for that. It's great to have a city manager, Ms. O'Connor, who is involved and who is concerned about claims. She asked me at a staff meeting last week, Greg Poole's the head in our safety award, our annual safety award that we give out every year. We're halfway through the year, so, uh, she's, she's wanting to know who that is so we can bump things up and get things started. So I appreciate what you do, Ms. O'Connor, um, and I appreciate Ms. Woods for her support and the directors that are behind me here and the employees, uh, that, that, you know, just allow me to do what I do. So I just wanted to say thank you very much and it's a great honor. Greg, before you leave, I just wanted to read these two paragraphs. This is in the Georgia Cities Magazine. I saw this yesterday when it came to it. It states, in the City of Griffin, you can consider risk managed. Gregory S. Poole has been named two thousand twenty-two Risk Management Professional of the Year by the Georgia Chapter of the Public Risk Management Association. Poole is a risk management city group that was nominated for the award by a number of industry colleagues. He consistently displays our organization's values of innovation, service, and integrity, said G M A Risk Management Service Director Stan Dees. Having worked for a number of years, he has consistently displayed risk management leadership by creating and implementing numerous programs and initiatives to help Griffin create a safer workplace for employees and a safer environment for citizens while also never losing sight of the goal of providing the citizens of Griffin with exemplary circles. So I'd like to give you this copy. I don't know if you have one, but, um, you can share that with your mother. You made the magazine as well. So. I'd also like to thank one other person, my wife, that's thirty-four years, that's here with me, Andrea. Uh, she supports me. She hears my phone ring at night, on weekends, holidays. Greg, your city, your phone's going off. So I appreciate her support and all that she, uh, has to endure with me doing my job. So Andrea, I appreciate you as well. Thank you. All right, we're moving to present, uh, additional presentations. Next one is a presentation of the National Waste and Recycling Workers Week proclamation. So if the ladies and gentlemen can join me up front and present your proclamation. Welcome, everybody. All right, y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. So proclamation, National Waste and Recycling Workers Week, whereas the nation celebrates the week of June twelfth through eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two is National Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And whereas the earliest garbage regulation effort was the first landfill in Canoesus Crete, where large holes for refuse were dug and garbage was dumped along with dirt at various levels in three thousand B C. And whereas since that time, sanitation workers have worked selfishly and tirelessly in all types of environments and at risk to themselves to provide sanitation service, protect communities and residents, prevent disease, and keep our communities clean, safe, and beautiful. And whereas the men and women employed by the City of Griffin makes significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens by processing millions of tons of garbage and recycling annually. Whereas within an area spanning fourteen point zero three square miles, one hundred eighty-one point eight miles of roads and a population of approximately twenty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-five, the citizens of the City of Griffin depend on the collection and proper disposal of waste, recyclers, compostables, and yard waste to promote a clean and tidy community regardless of weather and global pandemics. And whereas the City of Griffin values and celebrates our solid, our local solid waste industry workers for their commitment to our residents, businesses, and communities as essential employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, in conjunction with the National Waste and Recycling Workers Week, does hereby proclaim the week of June twelfth through eighteenth in the year two thousand and twenty-two to be Waste and Recycling Workers Week and encourage all citizens to join the Board of Commissioners in thanking the hardworking men and women who ensure our communities are kept safe, clean, and healthy. I have hereunto caused the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed on this the fourteenth day of June in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-two. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and City Manager Jessica W. O'Connor. So congratulations, just thank you. And if you'd like to say a couple of words and then we can take a picture up front with everybody?
I'd like to thank, uh, you Mayor, Commissioner Jessica, City Manager, your support of the Solid Waste Department, making sure that we have the tools to do our job on a daily basis and always keep Griffin a clean city. Uh, thank you all and thank my staff and their employees for ensuring that they go out and do their job on the databases. Uh, I know sometimes the goal is unappreciated, but I thank them daily for the job they go out and do, rain, and shine, and heat or cold, making sure that the routes are clean and the city's clean. I really appreciate them and thank you guys for all you do for us.
Everyone come and get them.
Well, I can't see. Okay, that's better, Mr. Brock. Ms. Murray. No, don't do that. Ready? One, two, three. All right. Excellent.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it. And the next presentation is national, um, is the presentation proclaiming for Pride Month. So if we have any guests that'd like to join us tonight, please come forward. Hi, Ms. Kim.
The proclamation for Pride Month two thousand twenty-two, whereas the uprising of the Stonewall Inn in June nineteen sixty-nine sparked a liberation movement and a call to action that continue, continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. Pride is a time to recall the trials the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community has endured and to rejoice in the triumphs and trailblazing individuals who have brought, uh, that have bravely fought and continue to fight for full equity or equality. And whereas the L G B T Q plus community in America has achieved remarkable progress since Stonewall. June has become a nationally recognized moment to celebrate and honor the way L G B T Q plus Americans have overcome adversity and enriched our society. Members of the L G B T Q plus community now serves in nearly every level of public office, in city halls, in state capitals, in governor's mansions, and in halls of the Congress. Whereas for all the progress, there are many states in which L G B T Q plus individuals still lack protections for fundamental rights and dignity in hospitals, schools, public accommodations, and other spaces. Our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, and the City of Griffin strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than being limited by what might divide us. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of City Griffin does hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-two to be Pride Month two thousand twenty-two. The City of Griffin urge all citizens to support efforts to promote equality and affirmation of the L G B T Q plus community and to recognize and celebrate the many ways in which the L G B T Q plus community has contributed to the history, culture, and social, social fabric of this nation, of this city. In witness thereof, I have a hieroton fixed by hand, the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed on this fourteenth day of June in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-two. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So Ms. Kim, I'd like to present this to you. And if you'd like to make any comments and then we can get a quick picture in just a second with the board.
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank the city for doing this proclamation, especially in light of us just opening the mural, if ever you're on Taylor Street, deciding you belong here. Um, I think doing proclamations like this, Loving Day, Juneteenth, shows and proves to our citizens and read that you do really actually want to do more than just put up a mural saying you belong here. So, thank you, guys.
And at this time, Commissioner McCord will audit the presentation of the proclamation for Juneteenth, Juneteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
The proclamation celebrating Juneteenth, two thousand twenty-two, whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved people were now free. And whereas Major General Granger announced to the residents of Texas, the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property. Whereas the first Juneteenth celebration was held in Texas in eighteen sixty-six. Since then, Juneteenth has been celebrated in communities across the United States, providing an opportunity to mark the emancipation of enslaved people. And whereas on this day, in hundreds of communities across the country, people of all races, nationalities, and religions join hands to acknowledge the extremely painful history and lasting systemic impact of slavery and racial injustice in the United States. Juneteenth is an opportunity to recommit ourselves to the goal of creating a more equal and just society, an effort that continues today. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to be Juneteenth Independent State, and urge all the citizens of the City of Griffin to take attendance of this event and participate in its observance. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed on this fourteenth day of June in the year of our Lord two thousand twenty-two. Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and the City Manager Jessica W. O'Connor.
You would say any words, Mr. Driver?
I'd like to thank your opportunity to give thanks to you guys as the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin, because you guys have really been very diverse in the approach of the committee that, that you created within us. We like to give you guys credit because on behalf of my moderator, Dr. Jones, which is not here, she asked me to say a few words of encouragement. But I, what I want to say, I want to give the City of Griffin a score of two. Spaulding County, zero. I want to give a score of the counties of the state of Georgia, one fifty-eight. Spaulding County, zero. We give thanks to you guys for the effort that you put forth to make this a diverse city. And we have come to the conclusion that you guys were faced with something that you did not accept. We like to give thanks to you guys for not accepting the proposal that was presented to you. And especially Mr. McCord, we like to give you thanks for all you do, for what you do to help the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We like to thank all of you guys, even Ms. Jessica. Ms. Jessica began with us, told us that it was going to be hard, but stick with it, iron out the problems, and we did. On Sunday, Saturday, and Sunday, my family will be celebrating, uh, diversity and inclusion by celebrating Juneteenth on the original date that my family used to celebrate years ago. So I'd like to thank the City of Griffin for what you could do. City of Griffin, two. Spaulding County, zero.
Or a scale of what?
There are so many cities in the state, but City of Griffin, two. Spaulding County, zero. State of Georgia, one fifty-eight. Spaulding County, zero. Every county in the state of Georgia has adopted Juneteenth, except our county here. That needs to be known. And we got, we almost caught the wind last week. Thank you.
Come on, Ellen. Wait, 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 Misses. We got the crew behind us, okay? Kim, you want to run up here?
Good, excellent. Thank you.
Do your footwork.
Thank you, Mr. Holberg.
The final presentation, proclamation is for Loving Days two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Powers will present that.
Right. Proclamation for Loving Day two thousand twenty-two, whereas in June nineteen fifty-eight, Mildred and Richard Loving were married in the District of Columbia and chose to settle down in their native home state of Virginia, only to be arrested and charged one month later with miscegenation, which was a felony offense in the Virginia Code at the time. And whereas on June twelfth, nineteen sixty-seven, the Supreme Court's unanimous decision in Loving versus Virginia struck down laws against interracial marriage nationwide, with Chief Justice Earl Warren delivering the opinion of the court writing, "Under our Constitution, the freedom to marry or not marry a person of another race resides with the individual and cannot be infringed by the state." And whereas today, the tradition and institution of free marriage throughout the United States is not infringed upon by any law, and citizens are able to celebrate all marriages because of this landmark decision. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin does hereby proclaim June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, to be Loving Day in the City of Griffin. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed on this fourteenth of June in the year of our Lord two thousand twenty-two. Signed Douglas S. Holberg and Jessica W. O'Connor.
You guys, you may like to make a statement?
I actually want to say something very quickly. Um, so I thought it was very fitting that I got to read this proclamation, uh, because my mom and dad were married in Spaulding County in nineteen seventy-two. Um, my mom is African American, my dad is Caucasian American. Um, and so even though this, this law was passed in nineteen fifty-eight, when my parents went to the courthouse in nineteen seventy-two, they were the first interracial couples to be married in Spaulding County. And my mom said it took them so long to get the marriage license because the people in office could not believe that they wanted to marry each other. And so instead of giving them the license, they spent time running around saying, come down here and look who wants to get married. They want to marry each other. Go get somebody else and let them come see it. So I think it's a stark reminder that even though these laws exist on the books sometimes, much like Juneteenth, it takes a while for those things to work their way throughout the system. So I appreciate you letting me read that, um, because there is that little piece of family history and anecdotaly. It took forever, but it happened, so I appreciate that.
I just want to thank the City of Griffin for recognizing Loving Day and the Supreme Court that legalized interracial marriage in America. Um, I started back in two thousand and eleven having Loving Days, here in Griffin, to honor Mildred and Richard Loving and everything they went through, everything. Those before then went third. And I just want to thank City of Griffin for recognizing. Thanks.
Which camera we looking at?
Ready? Come, go this way. Look at me. Got it. Got it.
Thank you. Thank you. And that was, um, Loving, I never had heard of that until the proclamation came up. So I appreciate. Tell them what you thought living was, tell them. Tell them what you thought living was. What? That it was just living. Oh, my, Loving, I thought when I saw it, it was like loving in terms of just loving each other and, and, and then when I read it, it was, it corrected for me and so I learned. So just, it was, it was great to hear about that. Um, I've found the members of interracial marriages and, um, you just never would have thought of the trials and we just take it for granted thinking it was just an every natural thing. And it was actually discriminants, discrimination in our society at that time. So, um, thank y'all for bringing that for us, let us learn. Moving into citizens' comments, at this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item, not listed on the agenda for the public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. So with that being said, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on my left? Is there anybody on my right side? Okay. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertising issues such as reserving ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city manager. Item six tonight is received comments regarding proposed budget for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. City Manager Jessica O'Connor will address.
What do you think? I don't think I have ever been more excited to say that this is the night to adopt the budget because I'm ready to get this over with. It's been a tough budget, as I mentioned back in May. Um, we had, I think, a decent budget presentation for you all that is, shows a balanced budget of both capital and operating expenses for our governmental funds, as well as our business entities. We have published our public notice information in the Griffin Daily News on May eleventh, where we advertised the two public hearings, one that we've already had on May twenty-fourth at six P M, and then this one that we are having tonight. The ad also included the date of the vote as tonight for the adoption of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, for the capital and operating budget. The budget has been available in printed form in my office since Friday, May thirteenth, and it has also been available on the city's website. I haven't had a citizen, to my knowledge, come in and review the budget, minus some employees and some of you all that have flipped through it as you have been there. And I do believe that the presentation showed a fair and balanced budget, and I do still think that there are going to be particular, particularly in the areas of fuel, we're going to have to revisit this sooner rather than later, unfortunately. But as it is presented tonight, it is a balanced budget. So any questions or concerns anyone has, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Are there any questions, concerns from commissioners? This is a public hearing. At this time, would anybody like to come before the board, ask any questions, comments, or make statements relevant to the budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three? Last call. Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Moving into the consent agenda, we have items seven through nine. I'd like to take these as a whole. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, Mr. Tenzin with a motion, Mrs. Murray with a second. All in favor of items seven, eight, and nine of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Ms. Warren?
Yes. I, we voted, but I had a question. I was looking at the wrong, uh, question. It was about the railroad contract. Sorry, y'all, I was, I, I can't. If y'all wonder why, why have I not seen anything that's happening?
Item eight.
Yes, okay. It was... I saw that, who am I asking this to? It was the, we're not paying for it, right? It's the, it's going to go through the customer's account for this.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I think that was the question that I had. Okay, if I, if it comes back, that's totally my bad that I'm not reading that part. Okay.
So we've approved, um, consent agenda, items seven through nine. Moving to the regular scheduled agenda. So the first item is to consider the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners workshop and the regular meeting and the regular meeting. and the regular meeting, and the regular meeting on May twenty fourth. So at the workshop, we have Commissioner Tinsley, Commissioner Ward absent. Do we have a motion to approve the workshop? Mrs. Murray with a motion, second. Who's the second? All in favor of the workshop minutes, please signal by raising your hand. We have five oh two extensions, Mr. Tinsley and Mrs. Ward. And then the regular meeting on May twenty fourth, Mrs. Ward was absent. Do we have a motion to approve the regular meeting? Mrs. Murray with a motion, with a second. Second by Mr. Brock. All in favor of the minutes of the regular meeting, please signal by raising your hand. That'd be six oh one, um, Mrs. Ward stating. Moving into item eleven, consider resolution adopting the annual fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three operating capital budget, appropriating expenditures, forecasted revenues for specified purposes, function, functions, and activities by fund for the budget period and capital improvement program. Do we motion to approve the budget? Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tinsley, any questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item twelve is consider audit engagement letter for audit services with independent auders, modern and jenkins certified public accountants. Do we motion to approve? Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. McCord with a motion, second. Mrs. Murray with a second, all in favor of the engagement letter, please signal by raising your hand.
Aye.
Seven zero on item twelve. Item thirteen is considered a word of contract with Brad Cole Construction Company in lowest bidder in the amount of thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy one dollars, six hundred and sixty point zero zero for construction services for the rehabilitation of the Eds Creek Reservoir Dam and spillway. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion, second by Mr. Brock.
Not questioning this.
Yes, sir, go ahead. We got a motion, second for the question.
Does this go along with the idea of, from what I understand, from probably about six years ago, I'm sorry, my voice is fine. Sometime, but does it include cleaning that, cleaning the present lake out? When we got capacity that we don't have today?
No, sir. Yeah, demucking the, uh, lake is not part of the scope of the screen.
And we're only spending fifteen million dollars.
We're required to spend the thirteen million upon a review of the Georgia Safe Dams Program. Um, this dam was originally constructed in nineteen sixty four and as a category one dam in the state of Georgia. It's, um, structural integrity, if compromised, can result in a loss of significant property and life downstream of it. So they require that we reconstruct the spillway structure and the dam, uh, the concrete dam to a labyrinth weir, which is in line with modern construction standards for a category one dam in Georgia. Yeah, the, uh, the cost, now this, this bid came in, um, much higher than we anticipated due to increasing expenses, but the, uh, removal of silt sediment from the lake is, uh, another several million dollar expense that we're not prepared to propose at this time.
For what capacity are we going to have at that?
We'll maintain the current capacity, which I believe is a sixty percent original.
Six hundred and fifty, so. Six hundred and fifty five gallons.
Yes. Yeah, so about forty percent of the lake is silted in.
Did not spend fifteen million dollars.
Um, well, per the Georgia Safe Dams Program, we are required to address this issue. And, uh, the, uh, they reviewed the, the engineering design that's been completed by our engineer of record Hayden Sawyer. And this is what they approved that needs to be done to satisfy their demands. As far as capacity goes, uh, we also, as part of this effort, we, Dr. Keller and I uh, procure services from Hayden and Sawyer to have a combined water storage model completed. That effort has been completed. And, uh, running that model against data all the way back to nineteen thirty four, I believe, uh, USGS stream gauges suggests that we are not at risk with maintaining sixty percent capacity in that lake between that, between Eds Creek Reservoir and the combined storage and spill branch reservoir and the availability of withdrawals from the river for heads, uh, for the, uh, Harry Simmons Water Plant and Tree. So, um, aside with that model in place and relying on that data to to remind us, we feel comfortable moving in this direction now.
Thank you, Sid. Are there any other questions? We have a motion for Miss Murray, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor of the contract with Brad Cole Construction, please signal by raising your hand or say aye.
Aye.
At seven zero. Item fourteen. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Item fourteen is consider a professional service agreement with KCI Technologies Need Single Source for the Process Control Evaluation and Cap for the Shale Creek Water Waste Water Treatment Plant and the Land Bill, L A S, to the amount of twenty five thousand, five hundred dollars. Do we motion to approve the professional? Mrs. Murray with a motion, we have a second. Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor of the service agreement, please signal by raising your hand or say aye. Ms. Ward.
Aye.
Okay, seven zero. Item fifteen, consider approval of an increase in the cost of service provided by TerraCon Consultant in the amount of six thousand dollars previously, thirty five hundred dollars for buy environmental monitoring consisting of data evaluation, statistical analysis, and E P D reporting services for the Shale Creek Land Bill. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion, I have a second. Mr. Brock with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand or say aye. Ms. Ward.
Aye.
Seven zero. Item sixteen is consider on first reading amendments to the Personal Transportation Vehicle Ordinance Code of Griffin, Chapter ninety, Traffic and Vehicle Order, Article ten, Personal Transportation Vehicle Staff Attorney Kelsey Chardon is here to address if there are any questions. Do we have a motion to approve the first reading? Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brock with a second. All in favor of the first reading of the amendment to the ordinance, please signal by raising your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero on item sixteen. Item seventeen is considered claim against the City of Griffin by Nikika Zarara Hall based on any line of notice from Attorney Morrison Hughes dated May twelfth, twenty twenty two, alleging personal injury suffered in an incident occurring January fourth, twenty twenty two at Pine Ridge, Lanthe. So is this, um, one of those, um, staff recommends denial? Yep.
Yes, correct.
Do we have a motion to recommend deny? Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor of the motion to not deny the claim, please signal by raising your hand or say aye.
Aye.
And those against, lifetime? Six zero, or six one with Mr. McCord voting against. Item eighteen is consider a contract with Three Rivers Regional Commission for thirty, fifty three oh seven and fifty three eleven regional transit service for fiscal year twenty three in the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCord with a second. All in favor of the contract with Three Rivers, please signal by raising your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero. Item nineteen is consider authorization for Mayor Holberg and Commissioners Ward, Flowers, Murray, Tinsley, and McCord to attend the Georgia Municipal Association Annual Convention in Savannah, Georgia, June twenty fourth to twenty eighth, twenty two. Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor of the, um, authorization, please signal by raising your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero. Item twenty is consider authorization for Mayor Holberg and Commissioners Ward, Flowers, Murray, Tinsley, and McCord to attend the MEAG Power Annual Meeting, July eighteenth through twenty. Motion approved? Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Seven zero. And, uh, do we want to do, um, city manager and attorney comments before we go into executive session?
Sure.
Okay, so whether we do that?
Very good tonight. Just a, um, reminder that next week we'll have a mental health summit on June twenty first at the College and Career Academy. Um, there are two separate times to come. It's five, not my flyer, five to seven, and then one to three. One thirty to three and five thirty to seven, I apologize. So an hour and a half for each one. They'll be the same thing. It's just trying to get some ideas from our community and what they may be experiencing or what they are seeing mental health wise and what is the appropriate way to address that as a community. And also, of course, we will all be gone next week at the end of the week for our annual convention and training. So I look forward to that with you all. If you have any questions or concerns about reservations or your classes, please make sure you give them this Bartholomew. Actually, she's leaving the rest of the week, so I must train one myself. Um, and she'll be back next week and can also help before you go. So she'll have your travel packets ready, um, then. And then lastly, just to update you, um, that we have made an offer to the director as well as an operations manager, so I hope to have this finalized in the very near future uh, to move forward in that regard. And also are interviewing for cemetery secret events. A lot of different positions, important positions, waiting to be filled in the Public Works Department, someone to make sure I continue to update you all on.
Mr. Whalen.
No comments, Mr. Ash.
Mr. Brock. Mrs. Murray.
No comment.
Mrs. Flowers.
No, just very briefly, uh, it's, to me, it's very exciting that we have so many proclamations tonight celebrating diversity in our community. I think, uh, someone mentioned it in their statements, but it is, uh, very promising to me and exciting that we do recognize diversity in our community. So that's it.
Oh, Mr. Tinsley, nothing happened. Mr. McCord.
Um, just want to say kudos to all of the law enforcement who are out here uh, protecting, trying to keep our community safe. We've had a rash of, um, senseless killings, um, in my book, terrorizing neighborhoods. And to know that our police department has not been reactive, but proactive in doing some of the things that they have told us about to help ensure that, um, we catch these people who are out here doing this. And, um, kudos to the Spalding County Sheriff's Department as well, just all of everyone involved. Because everyone, I think, on either side of town you live on wants to save community. And that all starts with each one of us. Uh, you see something, you say something. And backing our, um, law enforcement to make sure we keep our community safe.
Thank you.
And, uh, I second the motion from, um, Commissioner Flowers.
I just want to give out, shout out to the Public Works and the City Golf Course. I was looking at the monthly reports. They did seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty one dollars in the month of May, which is tremendous. So, um, they're doing a great job here, nothing but praise and compliments. Folks all over about the golf course. Also want to give a shout out, um, to the city staff and the downtown council for an unbelievable June jam celebration. It's a lot of work, a lot of new faces working together. And, um, it's exciting when folks come together from every aspect of our community and work together for a great, um, inclusive, um, you belong type of event. Also want to give a shout out to the, um, to our finance department and Mr. Connor uh, for your second budget, unbelievable. How hard you've had to work to get that balanced, but, um, the team that you put together is doing an amazing job and just want to commend each of you. And finally, I want to remind everybody about the Summer Concert Series starting this Saturday night. Every Saturday night except the July fourth weekend. Um, the Summer Concert Series, we kick it off at seven thirty at the Park at six. And again, sponsored by the Downtown Council. And so I want to encourage folks to come out and join us for that great event. And, um, downtown council is also sponsoring the Fourth of July Parade. That is going to be on July fourth at ten A M. The rally point for parades is going to be at the, um, Courthouse Annex. So, um, if you're a commercial type of business, it's twenty five dollars. Otherwise, you're a marching group, golf cart, it's free. So sign up through the, um, Chamber of Congress for the Fourth of July Parade. And they're also planning festivities at Volunteer Park with food trucks and the fireworks show that afternoon. So, um, things are going great. From what we learned today is over a thousand folks show up early during the day and just start cooking out and having a good time at Volunteer Park. So it's great community festivities on July fourth. Mrs. Ward, do you have anything you need to pass on?
Okay.
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ward.
I make a motion, I really do want to close session.
So we're going to go into executive session pursuant to C G A section fifty four two two one for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining pending potential allegations, settlements, claims, administrative proceeds, and other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or the other officer or employee may be helped directly. Do we have a motion from Mr. McCord? Do we have a second? Second by Miss Murray. All in favor, please join. We're coming back into session. At this time, um, we are going to consider adopting a resolution designed denying the acceptance of any or all interest in a real property common owners five eighteen Clifton Drive, Griffin, Georgia, which recorded deeds purportedly signed on Walter R. Gilbert, Jr. and James S. Murray sought to convey to the City of Griffin as grantee upon the recording of said deeds in the real estate indices of Spalding County as discussed in executive session, resolve further that the city manager give an affidavit of this action and submit it for recording in Spalding County deed records. Do we have a motion to consider adoption of this resolution? Oh, you do, good. Mr. Brock with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCord, any discussion? All right, all in favor of, um, consider adoption of this resolution, denying the acceptance, please signal by raising your hand. Ms. Ward, you're good?
I have to recuse myself.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, so six zero one with Mrs. Murray abstaining.
Recusing.
I'm sorry, recusing herself. Thank you, for, Miss Murray recusing herself. So six zero one.
I'd like to make, we need another motion.
Do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn, it's nice to meet you.
Mr. McCord with a motion, second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
United Senate, you have a safe weekend.
Ms. Ward, we're calling, you're not going to office, Ms. McCord going in the office.